Mr. Harris. Sir, would you kind of up the call to meeting order?
My watch is off. Alright, let's call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Should I speak louder?
No. First thing on the agenda, sir, would be board organization. Recommend that you all vote for and appoint a chairman.
I nominate Brian Harris.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, sir.
Sir, the meeting's yours.
Alright, uh, thank you, everybody. So, uh, first order, uh, here nomination for vice chair.
I nominate Elizabeth Rowe.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, okay, congratulations. Alright, uh, next on the agenda is nomination of board clerk.
I nominate Jamie Percy.
I would like to nominate anyone but me.
That sure works that way.
I will second, uh, I will second her.
Alright, so we have a second then?
That was Bob.
Alright, alright. Your vote, all of, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Jamie.
Just for the record, I'm in favor. Alright, congratulations clerk. Alright, so next is, uh, paper of record.
Sir, may I recommend the Bennington banner as a paper of record?
Alright. Sounds good to me, uh, I'll hear your vote.
Nomination.
Nomination, sorry. I'll get there eventually. So...
I nominate the Bennington banner for paper of record. I'll second.
Second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we go to discussion? I just wanna know what the, what does that actually mean?
That means when we post, uh, public notices.
Public notices, okay, that's good.
Alright.
Vote?
So, yeah, unless there's more discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright.
You would authorize persons to sign warrants in the event of no board meeting.
Alright, I will hear a motion for authorization to sign warrants in the event of no board meeting?
For who would you appoint, sir?
I think we ought to nominate, uh, Michael Walker as the authorization to sign warrants if there's no meeting.
Okay.
I second that nomination.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, it should be, uh, just a point where maybe we should say town administrator, right? So it carries forward. Uh, we shouldn't be naming individuals, we should be naming positions.
Positions, agreed. Alright, so...
So the motion again?
The motion is to, uh, sign, uh, appoint the, uh, or authorize the town administrator to sign warrants in the event of no board meeting.
I second that.
Excuse me, it's usually the chair or the, and the vice chair that sign warrants.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll rescind my nomination, I nominate the chair.
Wait, I, I have a question. It's usually the chair and vice chair, but couldn't we appoint that, um, responsibility with whomever we choose?
I suppose you could, but the treasurer is also authorized to release checks in the event no one comes in to sign the warrants.
I would suggest we stick with the, 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 the protocol that's been in place.
So if there is no meeting, then that means the chair or the vice chair have to come in?
Stop that.
Sign a warrant.
Or, or they're appointing, I would assume, right?
Are we allowed to take public comment on this?
You can, you can recognize anybody you want.
Oh, question, sorry. State your name, please.
Uh, Rosemary Pellet. You know, I don't know how often warrants have to be signed, what the timeframe is, but since the town administrator is always in the building, or often in the building, and select board members are not, I don't know if it makes sense. And Linda, you might know, because you've been here longer, if it makes sense to have somebody who's readily available authorized to sign.
But isn't that the treasurer? I mean, the, the treasurer is also available. So it seems to me we'd have to, uh, I, I would suggest that we...
Are we limited on the number of people who can sign?
She's not authorizing her expenditure. She's just releasing checks.
Yeah.
Well, are we, are we limited on the number of people who, who are authorized to sign?
It's in customary chair or vice chair in the event of no meeting.
Well, I understand it's customary, but my thought process now is chair, vice chair, in the event neither one of us here, something needs to be signed, could we authorize a third individual?
I suppose. I mean, you're approving him to sign his own payroll.
Well, that's, I was gonna say, you can't take any of them.
Yeah, in that respect, yeah.
Yeah, vice chair.
No wonder you're so eager.
Well, we can appoint, we can appoint this to, to sign that.
In lieu of, if either of you weren't available, then you could contact one of us and to see if we're available to come down and sign warrants for the week.
I don't know if I would be...
It doesn't matter, the treasurer can still release the...
Right.
It's an exception circumstance, so I think, I think we should stick with the, like, body being the, the individuals who can approve it.
Right.
Okay.
So I'll change that to I nominate the chair to, uh, to, to authorize the chair to sign warrants in the event of no board meeting.
Chair or vice chair.
The chair or vice chair.
Second.
I'll second. Alright, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, all opposed?
Aye.
You only get one vote. Alright, so motion carries? Alright, so, uh, moving on to, uh, select board standing rules of order, so...
Please, Mr. Chair, you, they were sent to you via email, so that you could all read through them, uh, there's no rush, you can do these, send, uh, authorize these tonight as they are, then whatever you choose. As I will tell you many times, I would prefer they be right, not fast.
I agree with that.
I'd like to make a motion to table that, because I'd like to spend more time reviewing them.
Okay, uh, would anybody second that motion? To table it for further discussion?
I will, I second it.
Sure.
Alright, uh, all in favor of the motion to table the discussion?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Mr. Chair, I would ask if you all have, if any of you have a recommendation, you would get them to me and I'll make sure that they're written down in the document, that I could send them back out, the email to everybody.
Okay.
So get ready for, ready for, uh...
Go ahead, I was gonna finish, 'cause we didn't see if anybody was opposed yet.
Oh, go ahead.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Um, I do have, um, a recommendation that we put a, a date on this. When do you think would be an appropriate timeline, um, Mr. Walker, to have our comments back?
I think, uh, probably the tw- well, the April 11th meeting would probably be best.
So you would want our comments back, um, thank you, Michael.
Anytime before the 11th.
When to ma- make the changes? How long would you need?
Seventy-two hours?
Yeah, seventy-two hours is just fine.
Which would be what?
So, uh, we'll call it the eighth? That would be, uh, four days before, the Monday before?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, then that gives plenty of time to, I would assume we'd have to warn for that. So the deadline for warning is Tuesday at noon, so, alright. So we'll say that, uh, Monday, the eighth, have your recommendations into Michael. Do we have to make a motion for that?
No, I just think that's something just to agree to.
Uh, let's see, moving on to, uh, meeting agenda policy. I can't think of anything pressing that needs to be changed. Does anybody have any recommendations?
Mr. Chair, would you...
Have a discussion?
One thing to consider, uh, you can take public hearing anytime you want. Not public hearing, I figure, part of public comment. Anytime you want. You can establish when you want to take them, how long you want to be taken. Uh, you could have public comment taken when each question is raised. You can take it at the end or beginning, and if you wanted to discuss that, that's one thing that has been, a topic that has come up.
It has been a topic, um...
Can I ask why, uh, uh, it seems to me that that's a, that would be something that would be included in the select board standing rules of order? I mean, why would those two be the same document? But one included in the other?
Good point. Very good point.
And, and it does actually, and the reason I brought it up is 'cause there is actually some verbiage in here to discuss the rules of order, or discuss the agenda policy.
It seemed to be a hot ticket item, that's why I brought it up separately. But yes, you're correct.
So, tabled until the eight, until the 11th meeting, when we get comments about potential changes and recommendations by the eighth?
Okay. Alright, uh, I'll hear a motion to table the discussion until the next board meeting on the 11th?
How about a, a motion to include meeting agenda policy in the select board standing rules of order?
Yep.
Second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, all opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, at this point, you'd be reading the warrants, getting approval?
I think we all still have to sign those too, don't we?
We do. Alright, so, I was gonna say, read one, pass it around, or do you read them all first?
Read one, ask for approval.
Okay.
Pass it around, then the next one.
Alright, uh, to the treasurer of the town of Pownell, we hereby certify that these items due to the several persons whose names are listed herein, the sum against each name and that there are good and sufficient vouchers supporting the payments, aggregating, uh, twelve thousand, twenty-five dollars, eighteen cents. Let this be your order for payments to these amounts. Uh, I'm assuming I don't have to read all the amounts?
No, you would just ask for approval.
Can I help you a minute here?
Absolutely.
I was gonna do the same thing. I was gonna do the same thing.
How about, could we just read payroll ending three-three in the amount? Read off, read off all four of your warrants and take one motion?
Okay, that works for me. Alright, so, uh, payroll ending, uh, let's see, three-three twenty nineteen to three-eight twenty nineteen?
Yes.
In the amount.
In the amount.
In the amount of twelve thousand, twenty-five dollars, eighteen cents. Payroll three-ten twenty nineteen to three-fifteen twenty nineteen, in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred, seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, payroll three-eight twenty nineteen to three-eight twenty nineteen, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred, fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
That's account payable number thirty-six.
Yep, report number thirty-six. And, uh, check warrant thirty-seven, three-fifteen to three-fifteen twenty nineteen, in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Here motion to accept all four of these?
I motion to, I motion to sign the warrants. I stated.
Second.
Second it.
You sign them now, or sign them at the end of the meeting?
Just pass them around during the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, occasionally, there's an extraordinary large amount for some big payment, and, and when that happens, had it been customary that you just let everybody know what that is?
Okay.
If there's something extraordinary large.
Alright, so for, uh, you want me to read out loud for check warrant thirty-six, thirty-seven now?
The check warrants are easily, you know, I'm talking about, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, something like that.
Again, I apologize for this, it's a learning curve, so...
No, I don't know, I'm here to help you, I'm here to help you.
It could make you more nervous than applaud after each other.
Oh, I'm sweating bullets over here right now.
I think, uh, do we, do we, uh, take them, do we call for a vote?
To applaud?
No, 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 to, uh, we, we nominated, we seconded, I don't think we voted yet on signing the warrants. We did? I missed it.
Not applaud anyway.
So, just wait for all this?
No, I, I can continue as you sign.
Okay.
Mail is next, sir, if you'd like me to, I'll start reading some of the mail.
What, please read?
Uh, license, liquor license renewal, I'll read them off, and then you can approve them and pass them around and sign them. Uh, the first applicant is Winchester's store liquor license. Stewart's shop. Dollar General. And if you approve those, you can all sign them. Liquor licenses ending March thirty-fourth next year.
Your motion to approve?
Motion to approve. What?
Second that? Who made the motion?
Jamie.
Oh, I didn't hear you, Jamie. Thank you.
Alright, so we got a motion and a second?
Motion to approve the liquor licenses, sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
And everything signed needs to end over here with her, so...
So do we just...
Any opposed?
The chair would normally sign it, there's one signature.
Well, that's what I figured out, there's multiple spots.
Sign to the left for approval?
Right here.
Okay, so only one, or?
Oh, actually, yeah, I'll stick to the sign, we got all of them.
Do we need to print our names?
No, it's fine. Mark your X. While you're signing through, the next is a, uh, notice from Vermont League of Cities and Towns, Class Uneffective Property Tax Appeals Workshop. That'll be held on April thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, I'll pass that around. Uh, there's actually one on May seventh. Uh, one is in Fairleigh, the other is in Rutland. Pass that around if you want to take the information down. Next item is from, uh, Mr. Benjamin Gelheiser. Dear Mr. Walker, I'm writing you today to notify you I'll be resigning from my position on the Economic Development Committee. I have really enjoyed my time on the committee, but circumstances has made it impossible for me to carry on with as much focus as I would need to be an effective member. I will also be unfortunately moving out of the area, having fallen victim to the very issue we are trying to prevent. I really hope a replacement can fill my spot on the committee, because I think it has the potential to serve our amazing town a great purpose, and help everyone who does and would live here. I have always loved this town, and will hold, for, will hold it forever, a large spot in my heart. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, I hope I can return one day and make it the place I know it can be. Sincerely, Benjamin Gelheiser. I request a motion to, with regret, accept the, uh, resignation of Benjamin Gelheiser.
A motion to accept his resignation.
With regret.
With regret.
I second that.
Alright, all in favor to accept the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Next letter would be...
All opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I can make just a quick, uh, comment. After a motion, and after a second, you might ask if there's discussion before you move on to the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion, second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Alright, well, any discussion?
Actually, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, uh, when we first developed this, the, the Economic Development Committee, I think we had talked about it being a much larger committee, and we said, we settled on five, because that's really all we could get.
Correct.
And I just wanna, uh, uh, make the motion that we, or, or make the suggestion that we make it, uh, I don't know, five to eight? Who, if we can get that, if we can get more people on the committee, that would be better.
This is not a voting body, is it, so you don't have to have a quorum show?
Exactly, and, and, and we've had a lot of turnover, too. And I think the, the stronger the body is, the, the less the turnover will impact us.
We need to have a quorum to conduct business, but we don't, we're not voting now.
Correct. Right.
And that's, clearly, we have to, folks, however you wanna do that. Right now, with, if you were to accept the next letter I'm going to read, that would be, that would be the, uh, replacement for Mr. Gelheiser.
Well, then I think I'll go ahead and make the motion that we, that we expand the Economic Development Committee to be at least five, and up to, uh, I don't know, up to eight.
Okay, second that.
Well, I'd like to discuss a little bit more, um, why the sudden need to expand it?
Well, because we know, I, we know of at least three people who are interested in it, and we discussed that last night. And I think, uh, and so far, uh, we have not denied anyone access to that board, to that committee, uh, if they've shown interest in it. Everyone who's shown interest has gotten into it. And it's also, it's also the fact that we have a lot of turnover on the board, or on that committee. Um, it, you'll have less of an impact if you have a larger, uh, committee. There's also a large, I would also point out that there's a fairly large, at least in the description, time requirement, I mean, it's, it's asking for twenty hours a, a month out of individuals. So more on that committee would also help distribute some of that work, and I think it would also help give a more diverse views on the board, on that committee. So all, for all of those reasons, I would think that we want as large a committee as we can to be as representative as we can of our population.
You have anything to add, John?
Yeah. Thanks.
You're on that committee, so...
I know.
Yeah, I think having a few more voices on it, um, doesn't gonna hurt the board at all. We are short right now, so...
The board, the committee, the board?
The committee.
The committee, yes.
Well, we're short by one, but we have a letter of interest?
Yes, right here.
And we're down two, and we're not sure about, uh, Chris, right?
Or John.
Or John, I mean.
Yeah, I sent him an email this morning.
Yeah, he's been missing two meetings, so...
Okay. And we know that we've had other indiv- other community members already submit letters of interest?
You were gonna give me, yeah.
Yeah, um, I believe those were sent in. Okay.
And in the interest of full disclosure, part of why I'm saying that is I'm interested in being on that committee. I was never on it before, and never, it gave the interest, um, uh, because no select board members were a part of it. But now, if it's okay for select board members to be a part of it, we never said it was good, or it was acceptable or not acceptable, but I always assumed it wasn't, because no one on the select board had ever shown the interest or asked to be on the committee. Um, and I do have an interest in being on that committee as well.
You might be ex officio if you're on there and unable to vote or make motions.
Well...
Right.
That was telling us on the committee.
Hold on. We're, we're kinda getting a little out of hand. And, and I'd let this slip by, and I apologize. If you're gonna speak, uh, ask to be spoken, and so I can recognize you and state your name, sorry. I was getting drawn into the conversation, I was like...
That's why you read, you redo those rulebook.
So, anyway, continue your discussion.
Okay.
Anymore? State your name, please.
Point I was making, Mike Slattery.
Thank you.
The point I was making was that if a, uh, a sitting select board member becomes a member of another board in town, you're an ex officio member, you're there by virtue of your title as, as select board member, and you're precluded from voting or making motions. Now, whether that's true with an economic development committee or not, I don't know, but if Bob were to be on the planning board, or the DRB, or anything else, he would be ex officio. All of you would be unable to vote, unable to make motions. If that's true, then you might be just as effective just showing up.
That's true, too.
Hello, Marlena?
Um, I, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate for a moment, um, it's my understanding that you were against the Economic Development Committee forming to begin with.
That's true.
And now you wanna be on the committee?
That's true.
Okay, um...
So are you saying if I'm against a committee, and it goes forward, then I should lose my voice in the town?
Nope, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just, just curious, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly, that...
Yes, and I, there's no, uh, there's no conflict there, because now, if I'm against a committee, because, and I, I itemize the reasons, because it can be used, uh, uh, to gain more power for certain groups, right? So if, 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 for example, um, uh, the committee is, and it was used this way, and it actually was, it was their second meeting, they signed off on a grant. They hadn't reached any conclusions yet, they hadn't had, they've only had one meeting, and in their second meeting, they're asked to give more validity to a grant. The reason I was against the committee developing is these committees are typically and usually not very effective at economic, at economic growth. They've been used all through Vermont, and, again, Vermont, forty-eight out of fifty in economic outlook, forty-seven out of fifty in desirability to do business. So, uh, they haven't worked so far. Now that we have a committee, I think it's open to everyone to make it as effective as possible. I, that's just the, the way it is, it's a, um, you know, if I get voted out on, uh, on lower taxes, I still have to pay the higher taxes, so, so it's a, uh, well, that's my, that's my case, I mean, it, no one should be excluded from the committee, because they were against the formation of it to begin with.
So you'll be submitting a letter of interest?
That's correct.
Alright, uh, well, I hear a motion to either accept a proposal to expand the board, or we can table this discussion and discuss it and take a vote at a later date.
I'll make a motion to expand the committee to, uh, eight.
You already did.
Yeah, I thought we were waiting, we were waiting...
Yeah, we're in discussion, I'm, I apologize.
Sorry.
Alright, uh, anybody second Bob's motion?
Jamie.
I did.
Jamie. You sure it was you? Alright, I apologize. You're second for Jamie's motion?
No.
No.
I seconded Bob's.
You seconded it, so now we...
We're, we're ready to vote.
I thought I was being corrected on who made the motion.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, no.
Sorry. That's why I was like, are you sure it was you? Alright, alright.
So now we're ready to vote, 'cause we've had our discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstate, because I'm on the committee.
Alright. I'm, I have nothing opposed to it, so, yeah, I'll vote in favor of it.
Next letter would be from, um, uh, Ms., uh, Shannon Mc...
McLennethen.
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 McLennethen. Yep, I was the goodest in English. Please accept this letter as my expressed interest in joining the Pownell Economic Development Committee. I am passionate about our community and all it has to offer. The small town landscape has changed over the years, as a result, our way of creating sustainable econ- economic landscape has also, has to evolve while balancing the small town culture. I'm a magna cum laude graduate of Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts with a degree in social work and psychology. I'm also a graduate of ABA National Graduate School of Banking. I have twenty-five years of community banking experience, and the Senior Vice President of Retail Lending at the Bank of Bennington. I serve on the Board Chair for Oak Hill Children's School, a member of the Pownell Cal Ripken Board, member of the Bennington Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Secretary for the Green Mountain Friends of the NRA. I live in Pownell with my husband and our three children, in our spare time, we enjoy hobby farming, and taking into Vermont outdoors any way we can. Mr. Chair, I recommend that Ms...
McLennethen.
McLennethen be, uh, wholeheartedly voted in as a member of the Economic Development Committee.
I nominate Shannon, I went the easy route for the Economic Development Committee.
If you can pronounce her name, she's in.
I second that. What, no, I'm sorry, gonna abstate, because I'm on the committee, sorry.
I think we might have somebody who has a question?
A question, yeah.
Would you state your name, please?
My name's Jenny Dewar. Um, in the past, whenever there's been an opening on a committee, there was a discussion about holding off on voting people onto the committee until the public was aware that there was an opening on it. This is the first I'm hearing there's an opening on it. And now there's three, four?
There was, this was posted beginning of the week.
But it, but being posted, we, there was still discussion here while I was on the select board, whether it was posted or not, that it hadn't been announced publicly, and that people wanted a chance to be aware of it publicly before, so they could put in their names if they want. I know this was an issue with the Planning Commission when an opening came up, it was a, it was a issue, I don't remember where else, but definitely the Planning Commission. And there were people in town who, uh, had issues with appointing without putting it out there first.
Well, seeing as we just voted to expand the board to eight members from five, I don't think it would be too unreasonable to grant a request to have an open period for people to submit letters, I don't think that would be unreasonable. I mean, I don't wanna exclude anybody that's already put letters in. Could we vote to, you know, have an...
Well, can, can I ask, when, uh, the next, are we gonna have another, I believe we're gonna have another select board meeting before the next Economic Development Committee meeting?
Yes.
And Ms. Doer, I think that's a, that's a valid point. We did talk about that a lot. So I think in order to be consistent, we should ought to do it across the board. So maybe we ought to rescind this for now and then, and then put it on the agenda for the next economic, for the next select board meeting to, to.
The twenty-eighth.
To vote on her and anyone else that puts their, who puts their letter of interest in.
So I second the motion to rescind Bob's motion, and I make a motion to table Ms. McLenthen's applicant until it properly warned to the public.
I'll second it.
And the next meeting's in two weeks, not four weeks, right?
Right, it's in two weeks.
For the select board.
Select board, yeah. The next Economic Development Committee was in four weeks.
I just know that you would, I'm sorry, Brian?
Go ahead.
You had, you had talked about doing another, you were putting off another discussion until April. So I was just making sure there's still another select board meeting here in March.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth is scheduled.
It's supposed to be at the plant.
Yeah, we're at, twenty-eighth is the super board meeting. So it would be April eleventh, because there would be another.
So then there would not be, there wouldn't be a meeting before the next Economic Development Committee meeting? And I'm not, I'm just putting, I'm just mentioning that that was something that came up before, so of course it's up to you, all of you guys.
Well, do we want to try to hold a special meeting just to address that, then?
Actually, there's something that I was gonna put into, if you can recognize me.
I had it right here before, won't you?
That we might want to put back into here. This, this calls for meetings on the second and, and, and fourth Thursday of every month. Those are select board meetings, and if they conflict with the sewer, the sewer water meeting, then that's, or the wastewater meeting, that's, we can't do both. And that's, I think that's what we're saying, then that puts us down to one meeting a month. I think what we really need to do, and we've talked about this in the past, and I think we had some consensus on the board, but we didn't vote on it from the previous members, is to go back to our weekly meetings, 'cause that way we can have three meetings.
Respectfully, sir, we're putting another topic on another, we have a second regarding Ms. McLenthen's appointment or not appointment. I just wondered if we.
Well, because it's related.
Okay, I understand.
If we can't, we wouldn't be able to vote on it before the next.
This is still in the discussion phase of it.
Right, we wouldn't be able to vote on this before the next Economic Development Committee meeting, and we want to get them on there as quickly as possible.
Excuse me, Bob, as I recall.
I might be wrong.
In the event that we had to meet with, at the sewer, as sewer commission, that the select board, if it was necessary, was going to schedule a special meeting, because you can, in the same week.
So just to, like, do them back-to-back?
Right.
You could do that, or you could have it on a Wednesday or another day.
Okay. Then maybe we could just do this special meeting.
That's why I mentioned about doing a special meeting. Did you want to say something else?
Well, I had it on my schedule that the water meeting is from six to seven. Select board meetings are from seven on, so I'm not understanding, like, where the conflict is. Or am I missing something?
It could be longer, you're gonna be doing the budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Or it could be shorter, you know, it's just designated and you're in another building.
Smaller building.
All right, well, which is the board's pleasure, then, to warn for a special select board meeting first?
Well, we gotta vote on this first.
Way, way far.
Yeah.
My thought just was if we're gonna do a vote to table the vote on Shannon and expanding the board and taking other applicants, should we have a special meeting warned first?
Yeah, but we gotta close out.
And then fill the agenda?
We gotta close out this.
How many members are currently on the committee now, without any?
Four.
You're four, okay. And you just, you voted to expand it to at least.
Yeah, to accept up to eight.
What is the problem with appointing Mrs. McLenthen tonight, and you still have openings for advertising, you still need additional folks?
Because to Jenny's point was that it hasn't been, I guess the feeling was that there wasn't enough public notice to get letters of interest, if I understood.
But I believe that was only if, if there was only one position that we were going to appoint, and if we voted to expand it to eight, there's still three more spots.
Right.
So.
Possibly four.
Right. Yes, oh, sorry.
John Bashi, I just had a question that I've been hearing, it wasn't warned, or is it, is or isn't? How did she find out about it, is what I'm wondering?
Posted it.
It is posted.
It is posted.
It was on the website, so technically it was.
Yeah.
It's been on there for a while.
So then we could technically accept her.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes, of course, you can ignore everything. I was just putting something out there that was a historical thing, but certainly I'm not, I'm not.
Well, no.
Because we, Ms. McLenthen submitted, thank you, Brian, Ms. McLenthen submitted her letter of, of interest.
Yes.
And I believe there's been two other individuals that have also submitted. I don't recall if they've submitted them to Linda or to Michael, but they both contacted me, reached out to me and asked what, right, what it entailed.
Ask then, Michael or Linda, has anybody else submitted letters of interest?
Not to me personally, no.
Not to me.
Okay, so then expressing an interest to a select board member is not the same as putting a letter of interest in.
This has been on the, on the website for about a week and a half, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize it was that long.
Yeah.
So.
So can we vote to?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not against the rules.
I don't see any issue.
Because there's still three open seats and those we can warn for afterward.
I think we'll go back to his original motion.
How about just, just how about rescind that?
All right, well.
Jamie.
Yes, I'll rescind my motion.
Table the appointment.
Yes, I'll rescind the table of the appointment at this time.
And so we still.
And do I second that?
Oh, you're gonna rescind your second, all right?
I'm gonna rescind my second.
Okay, well, that's moving.
But that means we're voting to appoint, right?
Right.
So now.
So now, I nominate Shannon.
Deja vu.
And I second that.
All right.
Okay, here we go.
All right, so, all in favor of accepting Shannon's?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. All opposed or abstained?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Next is an outgoing letter, and I request that you allow me to send this on behalf of the town and the select board to Dr. John Mullen, who was here last night at the Economic Development Committee and spoke to us for a good part of two hours and was an excellent speaker and gave a great deal of insights, really showing most of us that there's a lot to be proud of here. And my letter is as follows. On behalf of the town of Pownell Citizens and Select Board, I extend our thanks for visiting with us at the Town of Pownell Economic Development Committee Wednesday, March thirteenth. You described and highlighted the many positive qualities of our community, encouraging us to maintain a positive perspective and elevated our sense of pride. You answered the myriad of questions our board members, citizens, and guests asked with suggestions and methods we can use to affect positive economic growth and prosperity. We are all enriched, educated, and energized, ready to work for our community. We are grateful for the time and effort you put into evaluating our efforts, and signed by me on behalf of board. Do you have the permission to do this?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think we need to vote on that either. I think we just say, go ahead.
Yes.
No, he was, he's very informed of it.
That was great, man. The next is from Ms. Jenny Doer. It's a notice Meals on Wheels National Celebration. It's seventeenth Annual March for, March for Meals, month-long nationwide celebration of Meals on Wheels and seniors who rely on this vital service. They serve over one hundred adults daily. Drivers deliver meals to about one hundred and fifty homebound adults. The annual March for Meals celebration commemorates the historic day in March nineteen seventy-two, when President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five to include a national nutrition program for seniors sixty years or older. Hey, I'm sixty. Since two thousand and two, community-based Meals Wheel programs from across the country have joined forces for the annual awareness campaign to celebrate this public-private partnership in guard or support. It's a fitting time, not only to celebrate the successful history of Meals on Wheels, but also to bring us together to support a solution that will strengthen communities. For more information on how you can volunteer, contribute, or speak, Meals on Wheels is, visit M O W Bennington dot org or call eight zero two four four two eight zero one two, extension one. And if you have someone in need of Meals on Wheels, dial extension four. Ms. Doer happens to be in the audience, if she wants to expound on it, as.
Yes, so what the March on Wheels is, is public officials are invited to go and deliver a couple of meals, and it gives, it gives publicity to the Meals on Wheels, and it also gives you a photo op. So this was an invitation to all of you. If you're interested in doing that, you can call Meals on Wheels and tell them that you're interested.
Now, is that on the weekends too, or just during the week?
They deliver Monday through Friday, yeah, in the mornings. They deliver to Pownell from about, rows, nine to twelve?
Yeah, I, I deliver, I'm an on-call one, when their regular drivers don't come. And if you're interested in doing, following the route, you'd be welcome to join me on Monday, I'm running the route. But they, you, you read something about a hundred? The route that I do has twenty-three to twenty-five people receiving meals, so Pownell benefits significantly from this program.
When I did it last year, I went and did the whole route, but all you would do, all that would be requested if you offered to do it is to go to the first house, meet them, take a picture, learn a little bit about it quickly. If you have time to do the whole route, then even better, but.
It's pretty worrying, I've done it in the past.
But it's, it's during the work, I mean, it's like eight-thirty to eleven-thirty for the entire run.
And you're talking about for this coming Monday?
I'm, I'm doing it this Monday as a sample, so you'd be welcome to join me if you wanted.
That's just if you want to do, but you can do it any time you want.
Okay.
You would just call Meals on Wheels and let them know when you're available, and then they'll do a photo op.
Yeah, I, I'm not providing a photo op.
No, the executive, the executive director, I'm on the board of Meals on Wheels, so the executive director, Elsa, would meet you at that house, the first house, and introduce you to the people who receive the meal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a very nice thing to.
Well, it's, it's definitely a great cause, so.
That got me involved last year.
If I can become available, I definitely will try to be involved. If anybody else is interested, you know?
Hard time.
So, anyway, thank you, thank you, ladies.
Next item, Bennington County Regional Commission, the Solid Waste Alliance invoice is here. We are budgeted annually to contribute seventeen thousand dollars, nineteen, seventeen thousand, nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. This is already approved, just reading it so that you're familiar with it and what our contribution is. You know about the Spring Select Board Institute, four of you are registered for it. There is another conference, Strengthen Communities for the Future, it's a community economic development forum. It's in Burke Mountain Resort, East Burke, on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. It costs seventy dollars. For us, one hundred and forty, for all others, one hundred and ten.
And that was March twenty-seventh, you said?
Correct, March seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Next, Mr. Chairman, we want to have a blanket motion to approve the following excess weight permit applications that have been signed by the highway foreman, and I'm going to read those off with your permission. Two thousand and nine approved excess weight permits Cardinal Logistics Manufacturing Corporation, Carroll Concrete Newport New Sand and Gravel Company Incorporated, David Chavez Excavating Incorporated, Fabian Earth Moving Incorporated, Gurney Brothers Construction Incorporated, Renaud Brothers Incorporated, Riggs Distiller, R K Miles Incorporated, Valley Crane Services Incorporated, Velco, and West Oil Company Incorporated. And I can get a motion to approve those, sir.
Uh, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this just something that happens every year, or when the regs change to truck weights?
No.
So what's the intent of?
The intent is that we regulate and monitor the amount of weight that carriers are moving across our roads. The road foreman looks at it, decides what roads they can travel on, how much in excess they are, and he, he can check those loads and make sure that they're, they're correct, specifically because we have some weight limits on our bridges. And we have in the past had some damage done and from overweight vehicles, and we can go to the insurance companies and, and, and get funds to repair those, and we have it on record.
And do we have a weight station somewhere nearby where we, how do we measure whether or not somebody's overweight?
Well, they know when they're loaded, I believe, when they're loaded, they.
They have a laden.
Their weight, yeah. So, and he, the road foreman knows the, these outfits and, and monitors them pretty carefully.
And if we have any issues, as far as if, if Joel feels that there's somebody that's abusing it, he can contact the Sheriff's Department or the state police. They have people with scales and nothing they can take and have checked.
He's very, very much all over this.
This is an annual part?
Annual.
Right.
Annual?
Yeah.
Then with that, I make a motion that we blanket approve it.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
The sec, next is my report. The first item, our health officer issued two orders of correction for two properties in town. They have thirty days' notice to clean their properties, and if they don't at day thirty, they could be issued a formal health order, which is also another thirty days, at which time they could be fined. One of these properties, zoning administrator also issued an order, and if that thirty days is up, they can be assigned a hundred-dollar fine per day until cleaned up, and this is in, one of these was based on a complaint, the other was based on observation and inspection. Next item is the status of the revolving loan fund. To burn you up to date, the landfill West had been capped many years ago. There was a solar company that wanted to put, seeking permit to put solar panels on that property, which means that we had to do what's called a Phase One environmental study. Environmental study Phase One, we all, I included, we walk out and we look at the area and see if there's any obvious signs of contamination. There was. That means we have to do a Phase Two. We weren't budgeted by B C R C for a Phase Two, but they did spend the money to put together the proposal. We have, we applied for brownfield money, that's a grant money, and were turned down. We were specifically turned down because by the rules of that, that grant program, we literally caused the issue. Now, there's a caveat to that. I found documents from nineteen eighty-one indicating a state was involved in it, us closing it. So I sent those to our representative Nelson Brunel, and I also sent them to the state and with an appeal to not have to do the revolving loan fund, that's going up their chain. In the interim, I've all, been involved in applying for a revolving loan fund that would complete the Phase Two and it would complete remediation. In other words, Phase Two is very likely to find that there is some remediation, we're gonna have to clean up. To the extent of that, we don't know until the Phase Two is done, but this gives us a revolving loan fund. Status is, everything's been submitted. Linda's been helping me, the application process is quite extensive, and we had great difficulty with some of the programs in trying to get everything filled out. IT had to come in and help, it had to dump all my Adobe and reload a bunch of stuff just to get these things going back and forth. We've spent approximately six hundred and fifty dollars, that was to get the Johnson Company, which is a company that's gonna do the Phase Two and remediation, which we're contracted with. That was spent out of existing maintenance funds from the transfer station. Once these funds are released, we can start work, we can start, they'll be dropping wells, they'll be dropping test sites along the property and evaluating, and we have a five-year wait to when we have to start paying it back. And the, the reason why we have to do this, or we're gonna have to do it anyway, if we don't go for the revolving loan fund, the state will mandate we do it, so I'd rather go for a low-interest fund. And I want to still keep pursuing to the state the documents that show that the state was actually involved with this, and hopefully they'll pony up a little bit of money. Yes, sir.
Do we know what caused the leakage or seepage? Was it erosion control or?
No, this was, this was a landfill that was capped improperly. If you, you look at land, modern landfills, there's material they cap with, it's like, the ones that I've seen have been like a green membrane, and then they have vents, and that, that properly caps and releases gases, contains everything. This was not, this was done in nineteen eighty-one, I believe.
So it wasn't done during the last phase when the state was assisting in all the hotspots in town?
No.
It was prior to that?
Yeah, way prior, nineteen eighty-one. So what, what happened was, when we did that Phase One, when you walk into the woods, you can see the leading edge of that landfill, there's actually material sticking out.
Right, trash.
You can actually see trash, man.
Marlena?
You had said that you applied for, what was it, the brownfield?
Brownfield grant.
Brownfield grant money, and it was turned down?
Correct.
Because you uncovered the documentation showing that the state was involved, will they reconsider that?
I, I sent that up to the state, I gave it to our representative Brunel, and that's going through their chain of command, if you want to.
And did they give you a timeline or anything?
No, ma'am, they had not. They had not, they had reviewed that.
And do you by any chance happen to have any estimated dollar amount as to what the cost of the Phase Two remediation's going to be?
Eleven thousand dollars, I'm rounding up. It's ten thousand and change. Now, the remediation, it's up in the air. I I wouldn't even speculate.
Can you explain the difference? Eleven thousand dollars for what?
Eleven thousand dollars is the phase two study, that's where the engineering company goes in, and it monitors all the outflow of, uh, drainage. They drop, uh.
They do test wells.
They do test wells, they take samples, and based on that information, they make a recommendation for remediation.
So eleven thousand dollars for the phase two study?
Yep.
But we don't know, we we won't know until after that's done.
No, ma'am.
What the remediation costs are going to be.
Correct.
Because the phase two will determine the level of contamination.
Right.
Correct.
Now, would the brownfield grant money have been utilized for the remediation portion?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm guessing it's a larger dollar amount that we are looking to get, okay. Let's just keep pursuing.
Oh, yes, ma'am, very much so.
I don't think we're going to have a choice in that.
No.
The other solar, the other side of the landfill, there's a solar project ongoing, uh, and that update, we've gone through, uh, some legal issues, uh, having the original mortgage, we had to go back in the probate because that more mortgage has not been discharged, uh, for the original property, so that was done. We have, uh, all the licensing and leases signed and ready to go, we have access agreements, so that'll be proceeding. Everything's been signed and moving ahead, and that would be a solar field on the east side of the landfill. Ma'am.
Marlene.
Um, could you please explain to the board what the solar field on the east side, what it's going to do for our town? What type of revenue stream does it bring in for the town? What's the benefit to our town?
Do you remember the estimated?
I remember the, uh, what they're gonna, I don't know what they're.
I think it's two point three megawatt, but I'm not sure how, what our, what our buyback is on it.
I thought those were, those were, are we talking about the three fields that were recently, uh, there was two at the landfill and one at the wastewater treatment plant? Or maybe I got that backwards?
The wastewater treatment plant is is different, and this is on the east side, it's not even done yet.
I'm sure I've known it.
But I don't remember the numbers, ma'am, I could get those for you.
So these weren't the three leases that we just did? This is something different?
No, this is.
This is a different field?
Of the three, one, that's one of them.
Oh, this is one of those three? Okay, then then it was thirty-eight hundred dollars a ye- uh, a year for leasing for the first ten years, and then forty-two hundred dollars a year for the next ten years.
You remember better than mine, thank you.
And that was for each of the three fields.
And there's.
Per field.
Per field.
Right, per field, so it's thirty-eight hundred times three, and then forty-two hundred times three for the next twenty years.
Twenty, okay, so at the first ten years, thirty-eight hundred, the second ten years, forty-two hundred, or the second twenty years?
The second ten years is forty-two.
Twenty years total.
Right, twenty years total.
The town doesn't own those, right? We don't own the.
The town is, well, they're paying us to lease the property.
Yes.
They're sitting on, their equipment.
So there's no cost to the town?
Well, this is also what uncovered the eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's the cost.
So, uh, so that's the cost, and then plus whatever that remediation is, and so that's probably out now, because that's out, so it's not times three anymore, it's times two.
Times two.
Because now we've only got two fields.
Can I add something to that comment? It seems that it's sort of beneficial that that was discovered so that it can be addressed.
Yeah, absolutely.
As opposed to being worse later on.
No doubt. Yeah.
I'm sure it was only a matter of time.
The, uh, next item is.
I have another question regarding the solar fields. What is the intent of the, um, leased dollars coming into our community? Where, where is that earmarked, what is it earmarked for?
I don't know that it's earmarked particularly for anything.
Is it just going into the general fund? The general revenue?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that before we move on? All right, go ahead, Mike.
Next is a request to add processing fee for permits for online applications. This was brought up at the last select board meeting, and I've invited the webmaster to, uh, to give an explanation of those fees.
Uh, well, state your name first.
Jen Holly. No way. Hear you too well on the microphone.
Yeah.
I'll speak up.
Well, does anybody, Harry, have a question?
I've got a couple. I I guess, uh, I'm curious what the platform is, how the fees are going to come back to the town?
Well, there's two ways we can go to make this very simple for people. The the fee would, for the form, they could come in here and fill it out for the exact same price, say if the form costs a hundred dollars, they can come in here and do it. If they choose to do it online, we have to pay credit card processing fees.
Right.
Um, but we can't short the town the money because the town needs the money. If a form costs a hundred dollars, they need a hundred dollars.
Right.
So we have to pay the processor. So if we use PayPal, it's two point nine percent of the transaction plus thirty cents.
Okay.
So it would come to a hundred and three twenty. So you can do that, and then if they don't want to pay the three dollars and twenty cents, then come in here and do it.
It's not me, sorry.
All right.
Yeah, it's not mandatory that they fill it out online.
It's not mandatory, it's a choice.
Yes, I I understand that, I just wanted to know how the path was to get, for that money to get back to the town.
The similar most common one is PayPal.
And the other question is, say, a month goes by, nobody applies for any forms, how much is that going to cost the town to have that there? Okay.
And the same with the other service that I recommend, I don't even know what they're currently using for credit card processing, but there's a company called Municypay. Basically, just they do it for municipalities. And there's a few towns in Vermont that use it, and there's also a no-cost option with them. Same exact thing we would do with PayPal, is pass it on to the consumer. If they choose to fill out the form, they pay it, and there's still no cost to the town.
Okay, so technically, there's no additional fee to the town itself?
No.
It's just, it's a convenience fee, basically.
Exactly, just a absolutely exact amount of the processing fee.
Okay.
So, yeah, the town is not going to profit on this, and nobody else is going to profit on this except the company we use. Which everybody has to pay.
Town's not going to lose anything.
No.
Exactly, that is the point.
Nothing, right.
And we're not switching over to all digital, there's still a pay, you can still.
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to be sure, and the other point was, I mean, the, that it was going to go through a third-party processor, it wasn't clear in the last meeting.
Correct.
What was stated was that we were going to do this through a website, so of course, there's genuine concern about people typing their, their, uh, credit card number in, no matter how much it's paid.
And that's another thing about taking an online processor who does this for.
For PayPal or Square, right.
The town would never see anybody's credit card information.
Correct.
Right, and that's important.
It is, because, you know, it's not, it doesn't have to be, it's going to save time and money, nobody here manually has to process the payment. It would just be put into their account, if we use PayPal, they have to go transfer it. If we use the Municypay, they transfer it to the account, to the proper account per department. That's why I'm kind of suggesting we almost go with them, because that's what they do.
So, and so, last meeting, I think it was, uh, um, there was general consensus, there was consensus across the board that we wanted to do this, it's something that's convenient, it's a, but I, but we had these questions.
Right.
Right.
So I, it's good that you're here to answer those.
Right.
None of that, and to be clear, none of that information is going to be on the website, right? I, there's nothing about this that they're typing a a credit card into the website, it goes to PayPal or whatever.
Yeah, the town will have, no, we just get, we just get money from them. You had a question, Marlene?
Yes, I did have a question, um, one of the items that was raised by Mr. Jarvis at the last meeting was the two point three percent processing fee, or whatever it was.
Two point nine percent and thirty cents.
And, um, and whether or not that was like an industry standard.
Yes, it it runs between three percent or one percent and three percent, and I've never seen one that did one percent.
Neither have I.
Right, and if it had been stated that it was, if we'd known that it was PayPal, then we would have known it was an industry standard.
Right. When, when I explained it to Michael, I thought he understood me, but he didn't understand it deep enough where he could answer that question.
Right.
And he's, that's what I got.
But we've got to lean on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. All right.
The next item is discussion of the town.
Oh.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, don't we need to approve that?
Yes.
Yes, need approval, yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use of the, where is it?
Electronic.
The electronic processing.
I second that.
All right, all in favor of approving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, then.
Next item would be discussion on the town hall bid. I sent you all a copy of what the matrix that the town staff was going to be going through. And by the April eleventh meeting, we'll have those completed, and with that, you can make a decision on which, uh, which bidder you feel is the best going forward and make, and decide how you want to move forward.
So we've got more information coming, so this is.
Very much.
This is just an informational piece.
Yeah, just letting you know, we have, we have, we have the bids, and we're, they're being reviewed by staff, and you have the matrix, yes, sir.
I think Marlene.
Yes, thank you, um, I'd like to table just any further discussion on this until after we know whether or not Act forty-six is actually going to take place, um, whether or not we're going to lose the school or whether we're going to keep the school.
With respect, ma'am, I think that could be a very long process, and, um, that that can be quite a process, and we'd be waiting, we've been waiting quite a while for that.
What I might suggest is that we don't delay this, but we can always pull the plug on one and change direction, and that way, we're not introducing a delay. I I I think where you're going with that is, what are we going to do with the school? And is that a possibility? And if it is a possibility, I don't know that it is, I think we talked about that before, but if it is, um, it's certainly something that, uh, that if we get deep into this process, we might be able to pull the plug and go in a different way, but if we don't go forward with this, then we're way behind.
What I suggest, that this process has started, it's been approved, we're moving forward, uh, town has waited well over twenty years for a new town hall, and I would recommend that we follow the this procedure on through, notwithstanding the outside factors, because this has been a long, long time, and we really need a new town hall, need a new municipal building, even if we do get another building, we have to evaluate it for, uh, for our, uh.
For our use.
Yes.
Did you want?
Um, just on the, on the form itself, I am, regardless of what you're recommending that we go forward with, I think they should all be on the, they should all be on the form. Is this a form that the town staff is going to fill out?
Correct.
And say what they think about each one of these proposals? And I noticed it's got four.
Sure.
Um, and we've had five proposals.
Okay.
I would recommend that all five be on there and let the town staff evaluate them.
Marlene?
Um, I'm just curious, when you go through the review process of each bid, how, how is your, what is your plan? Um, how are you going to be reviewing them? Are you going to review one bidder at a time, are you going to review each, all five bids together?
Well, if you look at, if you look at the, uh, across the top, deliverables, evaluate, however you want to do it, I laid them out on a table, and I concentrated on what the deliverables were, I went through each of them and kind of jotted and took notes, and then graded it that way. Whatever is easiest for the individual.
Well, I think that's appropriate, I'm just wondering if you're going to utilize something like the PemBok five, which is the project, um, project management body of knowledge, where it indicates you should evaluate one bidder at a time, so that you fully evaluate that bidder, and you're not comparing that bidder to this bidder at the same time, you do one at a time.
Yes.
And then you take the next one, and that way, you're comparing apples to apples.
But, but he's saying he's using the same process for each one.
Yes. But there's a difference if, if I hand five bids to Linda, five bids to Michael, five bids to myself, and we start thumbing through all of them at the same time. It's, you evaluate Kravat, then you evaluate Dewey, then you evaluate Goldstone, and you do it one at a time.
I see your point.
Okay.
I have a question, I'm not understanding at this point, is, are the proposals now being presented to the select board and the select board is deciding?
No, ma'am.
What, what is the role of the public in this process at this?
The process of the public at this point is at, right now, wait. We're evaluating the bids that were, were sent out. And once they're evaluated, the board will take those evaluations based on, uh, review of town staff, and they are at their leisure to accept one, make it go forward, make them select none, uh, it's up to them where they want to go. But this body, uh, being duly elected, is.
They're filtering the things that are going to go to the community, is what you're saying.
Correct, this will go before a vote of the town, they decide on what they want to do, what, what, uh, recommendation, uh, they make, that decide what they want to do, hold the town, town here, town, uh, meeting, and put it before the public for a vote. Representative government.
Yes, do you have a question?
Yes.
I think Jen was first.
Have, have, um, have all pre-existing buildings been taken off of the list of, are they?
I I did not recommend them, and to date, no one has, has, uh, brought those back up again. They certainly, the board can do it whenever they like.
The new board, so.
Well, the, the, the Roost building was, uh, one such, and, uh, the, it's a thirty-year-old building. It has, uh, high-energy bills, it's not, not as well insulated. The, the bid or the, uh, proposal was given to me on a piece of yellow lined, uh, paper saying that we'll paint and change carpets. Uh, the building needs extensive renovation to bring it up to code, the energy section is a code, and that, by the way, the initial cost to do that was three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So if you start putting these things in order, you're going to be in five, six hundred thousand dollar range for a thirty-year-old building. It does not make sense, it penny wise and pound foolish, in my view, I wouldn't recommend it. Again, you can have, you can folks do whatever you care to.
Bob, just, I I don't think the board ever saw those, though, that's the, that's the issue.
Yes, sir.
It's a.
Yes, sir.
You had them in here and you picked it up.
It was eleven, eleven, it was on a piece of paper just like this, it said, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we'll paint, I'm not sure, there was nothing else came with it.
Right, but I, but I mean, when I say showed it to us, you picked it up in a meeting like this and showed it to us, it didn't go around, we didn't read it, we didn't evaluate it.
I'll drag it back up, and you go look at the piece.
I would just like to see, I mean, when we have a proposal like that, any of those proposals, I'd like to see the full stack of, these are the ones that met the requirements in my assessment, and these are the ones that did not, and why, and I'd like to see them all, and I don't think any of that should be, uh, should be.
Okay. When I showed you, when I held it up, I thought that was satisfactory, that, I mean, you could see it. If you want to physically pass it around, that's perfectly fine with me.
Well, no, 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 I'm not talking about physically passing it around, you gave us, I'm, I'm sorry, if I could just complete your thought?
Yeah.
All right, you didn't finish your thought.
All right.
Marlene is next.
Okay. Just that, it should be in the package, I mean, it should be, these are the ones that met the criteria, these are the ones that did not meet the criteria, and why.
In addition to which, there was extensive discussion that when we went to bid, that we, this was, these were the bids under that bid, that the other buildings, we took proposals, and only one separately. It was a separate proposal because, uh, there was really, to, to, the discussion centered around, how was I possibly, already this, this bid was convoluted, that if I was going to try to put, uh, more into it, to, uh, in addition to this, you're going to bid on a building that is, is, uh, is, is, needs to be renovated. That is completely separate, so that doesn't involve this, it's completely separate, that was a building that was brought separately on its own merit, and it's not part of this. That's what you're saying.
All right, okay, hold on, hold on, Marlene?
So if I understand this correctly, there's a proposal for new building, new construction. The yellow sheet of speno paper that you're talking about was a reconfiguration of an existing building, which was not part of an R F P.
No, it was not.
New construction, so that would be a separate R F P if that's the route that the board wants to go. The other thing that I want to mention is, um, when we're looking at potential existing buildings, I'm guessing, based on the number of people that need to be in a building, there's an average square footage that is needed. And then you have to make sure that it's ADA compliant, and so when you take all that into consideration, I don't know if the board did, what does that leave for existing buildings that are in the area that meet those requirements? And again, that would be a separate R F P for reconfiguration of an existing facility, not new construction.
But you would still hopefully attempt to meet the criteria that you're trying to accomplish.
But there was an R, I'm guessing it was an R F P that was put out for bid?
No, it was actually the gentleman submitting to us a proposal.
Okay.
A singular person submitting a proposal on a singular building.
For something that was never written out as an R F P.
No, now, to be fair, it was considered some time ago with the old building committee, and they, they actually hired an engineer architect, I believe, to go in and determine if the building could be renovated, it was an extraordinarily large number, and there was discussion of how that, yeah.
Mike, you seem like you're on a.
I'm very familiar with that, with that, uh, Line Sync did that evaluation of the Roost at that time. The param- The parameters that the committee here in Ponle laid out were to make that equivalent to a new building.
Okay.
What would it take? That meant stripping off all the, all of the, um, cedar siding, putting up exilation. Um, what they found, what Line Sync will tell you is extremely well-built building, extremely well-insulated and energy efficient. So I'm not sure where Michael gets his information on that. Um, so, of course, the cost then came in when you had to buy the building. The cost then came in at equal to or more than a brand-new building. And I pointed that out. I talked to the guys from Line Sync at a town meeting specifically for that and they said, "The Roost is in great shape." They asked us, your committee asked us to do this, to price this out like a new building. To me, that was kind of a fix, like, "Let's make this look like a brand-new building." "Oh, jeez, and then we got to pay three hundred thousand for it?" Of course it's going to be more expensive, so. I think, I think this committee ought to go look at it.
And.
Or any other building that's, that's available.
We had, we had, we did, we did go and look at the building?
I think I'm the only select person who went and visited the Roost. Did you go? But maybe you went, didn't you?
Hold on, hold on. Stop, stop, stop. John wanted to say something.
Uh, I just want to say, I, I agree with Mike on this because it's, uh, if there's not, you have to look into those, these buildings that are out there. And what your cost of a new building is going to be. Right now, you're looking at a cost eight hundred to a million dollars versus three hundred thousand dollars to do something for four hundred thousand. You have the money or more, that's what your community is going to look at. Not just because we want a new building, we want to have something that's efficient, but not at a million dollars. That's why it keeps getting denied. I mean, in the past, it's, it got shut down because that cost was going so high. Um, I remember one of the meetings I was at was like one point two million, one of the, one of the numbers. And it went, no, we're not doing it. So I think what you guys had to look at is, is that building's able to get for five hundred thousand with repairs and everything, it might be a consideration, just to be looking at it.
Okay, well, Marlena wanted to go next.
If I understood Mr. Slattery correctly, did you, maybe I misunderstood you, did you not just say that the cost to retrofit the Roost to meet the requirements of a
New building.
New building was going to be more than?
No.
No, okay, did I misunderstand?
Less, but when you add in the cost of buying that, it immediately made it more expensive.
Correct.
Okay.
But that was the ideal. And I, and I'll tell you, I saw this letter here at the town hall, the letter from the then-committee chairman, directing Line Sync, "Make this thing look brand-new."
Correct.
Everything, every little detail. Well, what's, what would be the point of that?
Right.
Except to say, "We don't want that building. We want a new building right here."
You may not need that.
Let Mike go next, please.
Number one, he's exactly right, and I'm not unaware of that. Right, I'm, I'm simply aware of that. And that was considered. And I knew that they had done that and I knew what that price came out. Second, we've gone through this before. Uh, we walked through the place, we, uh, came up with prices, we, we talked about how much this was going to cost. And yes, you want low cost, but you're buying a thirty-year-old building, right? That's starting at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you've got to bring up to our energy code. You got to do ADA, you got to check the wiring, insulation. It's a higher energy requirement. So we, we went through that already, okay? You can't, two separate, two separate proposals. The gentleman who gave us a proposal did so on a piece of paper saying he would, he would paint it and change the carpets. That, to me, is not an acceptable proposal, number one. And number two, not, I don't want, I don't care about a renovated building, a new building. I, I was asked to go and do these proposals, which I did. I'm saying that that was discussed before. You can certainly bring it up again, you can do whatever you'd like, but that was not.
No, that wasn't part of the original request that you were asked to do.
I brought that up and I do not recommend it. That's it. And if you want to continue, you absolutely certainly can.
Thank you for your input on that.
Thank you.
I have my own opinion on where I think we should go on this. I think we should have a discussion on it. Absolutely, on how to proceed. Should we table this discussion then?
Yes.
For another board meeting? To reexamine other options? And if we choose, we could continue on, on the path we're on, or examine another path?
This was just for informational, correct?
No. With respects, this was telling you where we are in the process. This was all decided. I went and set out RFPs. We decided what we were going to do. Here's the path. It was all done. And now we have proposals and I was illustrating how we're going to review those and then bring those back for you to make a recommendation. We start all over again. We're going to be another twenty years.
This would be the third time.
This would be the third time. The third time for just this iteration of this.
Hold on, Marlena wanted to say something first.
So if, if, if what I'm understanding, the decision was made by the previous board to move forward with new construction. No.
Yeah, it was, I didn't recommend that. Do you remember them actually voting no on, on the Roost?
No.
I brought that to them.
Well, I believe I was at a town hall meeting and I specifically, as a community member, had asked Nelson what happened with the Roost vote and he said it was voted down by the public, I thought he said.
No.
It never went to a formal.
Never went to a formal vote.
Right.
Okay.
We never voted on it as far as the town goes. I know that.
John?
I would recommend, if you guys look at it, review those too to keep them as an option. I think keeping that up there on the board, it's already there. But as you're, even if you vote to, to review them and go through them, it's not, you know, I wouldn't see it to be an issue.
Right.
But I would think going forward also, putting in something for the, the Roost or other buildings to be renovated as an extra, extra options.
As I stated, that was done.
Mike?
And then at that point, I think, Michael, if I understood you, no RFP was done on existing buildings. That the owner of the existing building just sent in a proposal handwritten as to what he would do to bring it up to, just to be able to move in there. At that point, if you think it's viable, then you do RFPs. You ask the owners of these existing buildings for your RFP.
It was well-known what the existing buildings were, uh, was discussed. This gentleman at the Roost gave us a proposal. And we went through the building, myself and staff, uh, Tom Shuey, uh, Joel Barrington.
I've been through a few of them once.
Yeah, and, uh, again, if you want me to break that out and you want to look at it, you, you're more than welcome to, um, but we've done all this. Moving ahead. If you want to start again, we can do that.
I'm not necessarily saying we need to start again, but I'm, I'm just guessing that you have some sort of census to the square footage that you need to accommodate everybody that needs to work.
Correct.
Did the Roost meet the square footage in addition to allowing for ADA compliance? Because it's my understanding a, an elevator would need to be installed, or is there an elevator?
Yeah, it's, it, it is a large building. There is enough room. There's absolutely enough room.
Meeting, meeting area and the whole line yard.
Mm-hmm. It's large enough, yes.
With a separate building for a meeting area.
I think we actually, uh, there were, uh, at least in recent, in recent history, there were three possible proposals of renovations. Um, and, uh, that I remember, there was the Hilltop and I think nobody liked the, nobody liked the, uh, the location.
Before my time.
And it was much bigger.
Oh, the Hilltop. No, 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 that was, yeah, that was, yeah.
And then I thought you had mentioned to me that somebody had a proposal to renovate.
And he didn't submit.
He didn't submit?
No.
And the Roost.
I just want to remind everybody that this building is not healthy to be in. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting and I don't want anyone to get, no one's been to the doctor yet here. And just telling you, keep moving forward.
Yep.
That's what we're trying to do. This was already discussed. We're going over old ground.
Before we get shot out of here.
RFPs are in for, for a town hall.
I would just like to point out that in our defense, it is a new board. Everybody's getting up to speed. So I, I think it's perfectly legitimate that we have an open discussion.
No problem.
And we, we discuss everything. We get everybody on the same page as far as what's been discussed in the past. So we're not, we're not changing course in anything. This is just a free flow of ideas. So I see no issue with that. If anybody has an issue with that, you know, feel free to speak up. I, I, I appreciate everybody's honest opinion and that's, that's what we're here for. So I'm just pointing out that it is four new members on this board. And we're all just trying to get up to speed and get on the same page, so.
And by us asking these questions, then we can understand how we got to this point.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So I just felt the need to get that clarification out there. So.
Thank you, Chairman. So moving forward with this, it's just.
Yeah, I mean.
We're going to wait for more information.
Yeah, so we're going to wait for these guys to submit more information, correct? You'll go through it, you'll fill in the matrix, you'll supply that to us, then we can have, go from there.
And you have the option, you can introduce them.
And at any time, if we don't like what we hear, I'm just saying this now, we still have the option. We can try to examine another, another option.
You absolutely can, yes.
All options are still theoretically on the table. I'm just putting that out there. As far as, you know, to Linda's concern, it's agreed. The town needs a new town hall, in my personal opinion. And I think a lot of people agree with that. So nobody's saying we're not going to build a town hall. At least, I'm not.
Can you?
Bob, did you want to add something?
Um, not to this discussion, but I just want to apologize for, uh, apologize for the interruption. Uh, it was a work emergency and I just had to send an email if somebody was wondering about me violating open meeting laws. Um, it was a work emergency.
You can put your phone in the hat now. Is that what we do for the teenagers?
I was going to say that might be something we address at the next meeting. All jokes aside, though.
I was wondering, can we get a copy of the RFP of how this came about?
Yeah, absolutely. The RFP and I have, uh, we sit down on the desk.
Understand where you're getting the.
Right, this was.
Is it on an email? Do you got it on a PDF?
Yeah, absolutely. The, um, and all that, the bidders are all here on my desk.
Okay.
Anytime you want to look at it, come in and look.
Just to see where this, where you started, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
And do we still have this, these, these stacks?
Yeah, they're all inside the cabinet, yes.
Oh, okay, that's good, that's good.
Stop that.
Unless they've been, they've been gone through and switched around and.
Well, unfortunately, the, the last, the, the meeting of the last select board, we all got this package. So now I'm the only one that had it, so.
I was going to say, I'm sure we have access to a copy machine. I follow all scales.
Well, I just look at it online.
I was going to say, I'll look at it online. It saves entries.
I prefer hard paper copies myself because I have yet to have a piece of paper have the battery die. I do most of my reading on lunch breaks and then conference rooms at my job.
Ready to move on?
Yes, ready to move on. Sorry for the dog.
Uh, establish two dates to hold the public hearings to amend the town plans, energy section. It must be completed by the twenty-third. We warned April tenth, two thousand nineteen, and Wednesday, April seventeenth, uh, two thousand nineteen, both at six thirty PM at the Ponle Valley Center Fire Station located two hundred, two thousand eight hundred seventy-two North Ponle Road. And this is to consider, and Michael Slattery is here and he can speak to this.
I'm sorry, what two days with those? I was writing about.
April tenth and April seventeenth.
Six thirty.
Six thirty PM.
And that's at the firehouse? The one here in Senate?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you have questions, we're happy to answer them. If you want to know the real pressing reason we should do it, I can tell you that as well.
I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, absolutely. Mike, if you don't mind, give a, give an overview of it quickly.
January twenty-third, your planning commission passed, or adopted this proposed Section Eight of the Energy Section to conform with Act one seventy-four, uh, which is the Vermont Energy Improvement Act. In an effort to conform with them, uh, would grant us special deference in some cases with the Public Utilities Commission for large wind or solar, um, types of ventures. Uh, something that we've heard from this community, this community is very much against wind and feels as though it's had enough solar. Um, that, um, we per acre of land have as much solar as any other community in the state of Vermont. In essence, we've kind of done our share of solar as well. So by the time we adopted our new town plan in May, our Chapter Eight, the Energy Section, was already obsolete because they had just passed roughly, roughly at the same time, a few months before, um, Act one seventy-four. So by gaining special deference, just to give you an idea, that would mean if somebody comes into Ponle, large wind, um, producer, and they want to put wind towers on the Taconic Crest, fifty of them, none of our bylaws could govern that, nothing that we do aside from assembly governs that. The Public Utilities Commission in Mount Pelier governs that exclusively. They say yes or no and where it could go. By amending this section of the town plan, we are adhering to the rules set out in one seventy-four. And those rules specifically that the, the changes, I think Linda put a letter in for everybody stating the changes start around page eighty or something, go for four or five pages. It concerns citing as to where these big commercial, uh, wind and solar operations can go and more importantly, where they can't go, okay? Right now, our current town plan, new as it is, it speaks in general terms of our wishes here in Ponle as to what we want and don't want. This narrows it right down. We list preferred sites like brownfields, like reclaimed, you know, the, the transfer station, the roofs of the school, the roof of Mack Moby and things like that. We all, and we already, and we list all of the existing solar. Wind, however, we have virtually, um, no space, that sounds funny. There's, there's no place, no acreage for large wind endeavors in the entire town because the Public Utilities Commission has allowed the regional commissions to put into their planning thousand-meter buffers to homes. So that leaves, if you look at the maps, you'll see without that thousand-meter buffer, it might be map fourteen or fifteen, you will see in the upper left-hand corner a small map there, Brian. And you see that one little speck way up in the northwest corner? It's a few acres of land, um, going out towards New York State, toward Breeze Hollow and, and that area. Hardly big enough for a big wind operation and very, very difficult to get through.
Is it fourteen or fifteen?
Cause this says existing potential energy sources.
Hang on a second.
This is open spaceland.
So look at the, look at the last map. Just flip it over for a second.
Yeah.
So there it is, without that thousand-meter constraint right there. See all the areas of red?
Yes.
If we didn't have that thousand-meter constraint, we could have large wind in all those areas and there wouldn't be anything we could do about it. The thousand-meter constraint, look at the map in the upper left-hand corner, that little tiny speck. That's the only place we can have it.
Okay.
Which relates to the map.
But we need to approve that plan, that amendment.
Yeah, and that's why, it's been two months since your planning commission passed this. And I'll give you, I'll give you an indication as how important that is. If you, however, wherever you come down on solar, I, I received a phone call, um, two days ago, an informal inquiry as to a fourteen-acre, um, project right in the heart of downtown North Ponle, um, in prime agricultural land. So, right now, I don't think we can stop it.
Okay.
Once you have your two meetings, then it still has to be approved by the regional commission. So that's why I'm saying, you know, this has been, either change it, throw it out, or approve it, but this has been going long enough. It's time to take some action on it.
Okay.
Bob, that's right. Bob, that's right.
Uh, no, I, well, I agree. These are the public hearings. We have to have the two public hearings before we then come back to select board and then approve the, uh, the changes to the energy plan, to the section eight. Um, and then, uh, and there could be some changes coming out of the public hearings, but we wanna make sure that any changes that do occur don't, don't, don't negatively impact, uh, Act one seventy-four in our deference. Um, and if you wanted to visualize where that is, if you were to go up Skippery Road, it's kind of between Skippery Road and three forty-six. That's where that one section is. It's on the top of that ridge that, uh, that, that is the only place deemed suitable for solar in Pownell.
You mean wind?
I'm sorry, for wind, yeah, for wind.
Yes, Mike?
Our public hearings, not that yours will be the same, but usually the, the most interest is in the planning commission's public hearings. Now that I say that, you guys will probably get swum. But, um, we had one public hearing, you're required to have two. You can't have it now for fifteen days, I think Linda, right? We had one person show up, Mr. Bushy. And I convened that meeting at seven o'clock and at ten after seven, we were done. So, not that I'm discouraging the public from coming in, but I don't think you're gonna get much pushback on this.
Okay, uh, without reading through this, cuz I'm still waiting for my copy of it, cuz I prefer the paper copy. Are there restrictions on residential wind power? Like if somebody, say, wanted to put up a small, say, like, like a little five or ten-foot?
Yeah, I'd have to read it again, but the height of the towers and things like that, um, setbacks to other land. But no, um. Your own biomass, your own outdoor wood burning furnace, no restrictions on that, except for what the state restricts as far as I think you need catalytic converters and things like that. You can have your own little windmill, your own, uh, solar array. We will, uh, encourage some commercial use. For instance, if something goes into MAC molding and they wanna create and, and put solar on their roof, not to sell to the grid, but for their own use, we would encourage that, or net meter it, however, however they do that.
Okay.
It's the big ones that are selling it to power companies, you know?
Like the big ones that you see go down through like North Adams and down through there?
Drive up to Rutland, there's three that just went up last year.
Right.
Again, I, I apologize for this, cuz I, I will be reading this. An example would be the one at Hilltop Farm, what they have on their cell phone tower. Would something like that be allowed under your advice changes?
That's still the Public Utilities Commission. We have nothing about cell towers. We talk about cell towers in there, but, uh, it, it's not the, the main energy ones that we're talking about are solar and, and wind. So I know they have a wind, one wind, and yeah, that would be allowed.
Okay.
Or there, I can't think of a reason that it wouldn't be, aside, aside from other.
Well, I didn't know, because like, that's a.
That was a Public Utilities Commission project.
Aside from being a cell phone tower in public utility. I mean, like, if somebody wanted to put one up on their property, say, similar in height, to take advantage of the wind.
Just have to look at the height restrictions that we might impose, but I think for the most part, um, that wouldn't even be a Public Utilities Commission if it's not gonna be net metered, or if it's just gonna be to help run the farm, that kind of thing. Or to run your house, your electricity. We're trying to encourage that, type of green energy.
So, um, just a, a recommendation that we put this, that we do put the, uh, I, I asked if that was on the website today, and I don't think it is. So we need to get it on the website in order to, in order to have the public, I mean, if the public's gonna come in for a public hearing, they should know what they're talking about. And if the, uh, and if the revised section eight energy plan of the town plan is not on the website, then they're gonna be coming in blind.
Yeah, does Jen still have her? Jen, how are you? Nice to meet you finally. So you had the copy that I sent for our public hearings, uh, with the amended section. I sent you the whole.
You sent me the whole thing?
The whole thing, and that unfortunately legally has to be, sorry, has to be, uh, when, when, you also have to drop them off at Winchester's and I did that for our public hearings, and Jen had a copy of it, and you may, I don't know if you still have it in the archives or not.
Yeah, I do.
I know you have the town plan, the one that was adopted in May, but if you have the one that I sent you that says amended November of two thousand and eighteen, that's the one that Bob is talking about, and that's one Michael asked me about today. And if we could repost that, get that back on in time for, like, as soon as possible, so.
And when is your public hearing again?
The first one's April tenth.
But as soon as possible.
April eleventh?
Tenth and seventeen.
Four-ten and four-seventeen.
If not, I'll ship you another one. I mean, I have it in electronic form, so.
April tenth, and I'm sorry.
And the seventeenth.
And the seventeenth.
Bob, and, and one last question, is I know that, uh, we're talking about the deference in the Act one seventy-four and the kind of things that we really need to have into that plan, but I'm sure that there is some things that, that, uh, that the public could have an input, impact on or input on that wouldn't negatively impact that. I mean, not everything in the entire section eight is required in order to give us deference, and not everything in section eight is gonna be required. So I, I'm asking for your input as to really, what are the must-haves to get there? And what are the things that are like, nice to have?
Well, first, in regards to changing that, um, the, the bulk of section eight isn't changing. Just those pages, if you have that cover page. And, you know, and I, I have an extra copy here. But, but, so, up, you know, from page sixty to page eighty, none of that's changed, and that plan has gone through public scrutiny and has been approved.
Actually, I, I don't think that's true. When we approved and talked about the town plan, we talked about it minus the energy section because it was always understood that that was gonna go through more changes and then it was gonna come back in.
You had to approve the entire town plan, not minus a section. We warned everybody that Act, that by the time we were done with it, we would have to almost immediately move to amend it. So it, it, it's what we have right now on the website, adopted in May, with that energy section is in force, so to speak. It's not minus any sections at all.
Um, that is not as I recall it, but, uh, we'll go back and look at the meetings. I thought we had explicitly said in the meetings that we were doing this, the energy, we don't have to focus on the energy section because that's going to be changed.
Oh, no, we had to focus on the entire thing. You can't pass, you know, nine tenths of a town plan. It wouldn't be, it, it can't be passed by us, by the legislative body, or by the regional commission, or by the state. So that is, uh, in force right now, as is.
Okay, and but, but it was always stated that, that this.
That we would have to immediately begin to amend.
And amend it.
Right.
That's different than not having it exist.
I was also on the board. We voted in the plan and we were told that the energy section would be amended.
Correct.
But we voted in the entire plan.
Okay.
That's correct. And that's what exists today.
My question, um, so what we're going to be doing at the meeting is just, um, letting people know of the changes that were made to those sections? And then we as a board need to vote yes or no? We're not going back into section eight and looking to change it, correct?
Yeah, we can, we can ask for changes.
We are, okay.
Then my understanding is it would go back to the planning commission?
Correct.
And then they go from there, and then we have to do the whole approval process again, where another public meeting, all that? Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
And the public can. That was the, that was the point. So as we put that back out there, the public can go through it, and that's what those public, uh, inputs at, uh, meetings are for. We do need to be careful about it.
And wind could be built while you're delaying doing that.
Right.
Yes.
Right. My other question, Mike, you had mentioned the fourteen-acre solar array. Is that in process now?
No, they have not filed a, um, application yet.
So until.
The title to the land has just become clear, and that's why we haven't seen this before. It's been talked about. So I'm not gonna mention any names until such time as it becomes more formal. But, um, it's, uh, he's already talked to a developer out of, uh, Burlington.
Okay, so.
One that's done work in this area.
So while we're going through this process, wind could go in without the thousand-foot, um, buffer in this fourteen-acre agricultural land could be utilized for solar.
Correct.
Thank you.
However, it's doubtful that it could get through the process that quickly.
I agree.
But still, it just, it, it brings an awareness of, you know, not sitting on it and twiddling your thumbs.
Exactly.
My concern is, when does their clock start running? If they start this process now, is it the town plan that's in force when they start it? Does that govern, uh, the, uh, decision by the Public Utilities Commission to grant us deference? Or is it the one that's in force when the puck, the puck as we finally refer to them, when they finally make their decision? That's my concern. I don't know that.
What do we need to do to find that out?
It still has to come to the town too, you know, to a certain extent.
Probably look into it. Well, sure, but more, it has to come to the towns. That, that's more of, um, of these developers, I think, respecting the town's process. They don't technically have to come before us to do these things. They have to go before the Public Utilities Commission. And I will point out, even though this gives us more special deference because we're adhering to one seventy-four, the ultimate decision is up to the Public Utilities Commission, and if they feel it's for the better of the public good, have the best plan in the world and still wind up with one of these things.
Okay.
But we get a lot better shot if we have this thing. So I'll look into that. I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know if that's even ever been tested, to be honest with you. I'm hoping.
It's a valid question.
Do you wanna do that? Somebody else?
Theoretically, we can draft this up in thirty days.
And then it takes about thirty more for the BCRC to wrap it up.
Thank you so much.
And thank you.
I think the discussion part of that's done. So.
Oh, you, the hearings, you. We're set with the hearing date?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, have the, that we go forward with the public hearings on April tenth and April seventeen. At six thirty. Well, we'll just, I think we just do the dates. We still have to check on the venue, and then the time might change.
No, we're all set.
All set. Six thirty PM at the fire station center.
The Pownell Center Fire Station.
That's the fire station.
Then, uh, that's my motion.
Jamie seconded.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. All right, moving on.
Park policy. I've met with, uh, Chamber Commerce, and the goal being that we start using, uh, more of our parks for activities. And to that end, started drafting a park policy. And here's the question. We can do a park policy, we can do a park ordinance. Ordinance, somebody violates an ordinance is subjected to several penalties. I gave you a draft of a park policy. Linda already pointed out some things that would need to be changed. This is for your, your first review, and put this through your head and, uh, think of where you wanna go with this. The idea is that we start bringing activities into the town, some of our parks. So, uh, ask around, read through it, ask questions, and move on from there. Yes, ma'am.
Was that this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it labeled park policy? Sorry, I don't see.
No, it's labeled. Facility use agreement.
Okay.
That's what that was.
What's the timeline you would like for feedback on this? Do we wanna maybe do it on the eighth? With the other feedbacks?
Yes, please, that would be great.
Okay.
Trail meeting, uh, sir, you were with us, you have to recuse. We have a trail meeting, uh, up off of Snake Hill Road with Recreation Committee members from Discover Pownell and, uh, Land Trust, representative from the Vermont Land Trust. And we've identified certain areas that, uh, we would like to consider for access to get to the trails and the six hundred-plus acres of town-owned land. Uh, some of the specifics I'll talk about in executive session because they're contractual. But, uh, we're trying to move ahead with that to bring some activity into the town, particularly hiking. And there'll be a lot more on that, uh, coming up, but I wanna make sure everyone knew that we were working toward that goal. May I move on, sir?
You may.
Page eighty-one, objective one, and the, uh, town plan calls for the formation of an energy committee. And I would ask that you consider and, uh, adopt a energy committee and allow me to post for candidates for that committee.
Could you pass me the town plan again?
I'd also like to speak about that too.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, Michael's here to.
Would that be separate from the planning committee? That's a, that's a song?
It would be, it's separate.
Right, um, go ahead, Michael.
It would be.
Oh, sorry.
Most towns don't have.
I'm okay if you talk.
There's been a coup.
Well, that was the shortest living. Shortest living.
Most towns our size don't have a committee, or they may share a committee with other towns. But what they all have, which I would rather see, is a coordinator. One person who then, with the approval of board, can form a committee to help he or she. That energy coordinator would either, can be a, a member of the planning commission. If they're not, they would become an ex-official member of the planning commission. They would sit with the planning commission, report to the planning commission, as well as report to the, uh, select board. They would be responsible, they would become the liaison with the state and the regional, uh, commission regarding almost all energy endeavors, including new energy technology, you know, bringing technology to our citizens, bringing technology to our municipal offices, efficiency, in essence, trying to save our citizens money through, um, energy efficiency. There is much better description than I just gave, and on, if you go online on the Vermont statutes and take a look at energy coordinator, generally the energy coordinator comes first, a committee comes next.
Okay.
So I don't mean to change that agenda. I probably wasn't very clear.
This is perfect.
So as I was just pointing out to Brian, um, in section eight, I mean, on page eighty-one and in section eight, it does specify in bullet one under actions, hire a local energy coordinator, which could be a position shared with another town, to implement, um, conservation programs. Is that, is that what you're?
That's what we're talking about, and, and I wanna clear up the word hire. Most of these are volunteer, except in larger communities where they can be paid, um, positions. This one is clearly not going to be a paid position.
If it's, uh, clearly not gonna be a paid position, can we change that language to say appoint?
You know, you can because.
Because we're gonna have the hearing.
Because we're gonna have the hearings on it.
And it's in section eight for comment.
Yeah, just to, just to make it, uh, completely above board.
Right.
Or put in hire somebody at zero pay.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. So you've been given a list of select boy, select boy, select board appointments for the April eleventh meeting. What these individuals will contact, go through Linda to establish whether they want to be appointed or not. The terms are off to the expiration, of terms are off to the right, the right column. And once those letters of intent are put together, you can make an appointment.
Could I have your copy, Michael?
Yes, sure.
Please, thank you.
Oh, that was in an email, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, that's where I saw it.
How many have submitted already, do you know?
Probably four or five.
Four, five, yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Jenny?
Because I spent so much time with Jen Hawley last year, um, I just wanna point out that all of these positions do have, um, extensive descriptions on the website. So, um, Jen, if you, I know it's like the fourth. So, Jen, I know it's like the fourth one over.
I'm still here.
It's like the fourth menu bar over. You go down and it says available positions and then you click on the read more and then there's a much bigger detailed description of the position that was asked for last year. I don't want it to go unnoticed that it's there since we spent such a lot of time putting it together.
And next to every section, there's a learn more and it's about the position.
Yep.
There are a few things that need to be tweaked in there.
I saw a little question mark.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Michael, when the letters come in, do you send us copies of the letters or how do we, what is the review process usually?
They're, we'd be putting them in their package, correct?
Yeah, I compile them. I've asked my due dates for the 29th of March.
Okay.
I think to elaborate on your question a little bit, if we're going to be voting on these on the 11th, we should probably get the electronic copies prior so we can come in informed and then decide who we're appointing and know who are, and know who we're selecting from.
That's why I have the deadline for receipt for me for March 29th.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
That was all in the email too. That was in the email.
Oh, I didn't do the emails. I don't know.
I never saw the email.
Sorry. There's the bus.
Let you know I read it.
This goes back to your fourth bullet point.
Maybe uncomfortable here tomorrow.
Sorry.
That tire racer rope?
Yes. That's it for administrative reports, sir.
All right. Do we want to take a short break?
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick motion for a five minute bio break, please. It's almost nine o'clock.
I'll say yes. We have to vote.
Hurry up.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, you can...
Discussion on...
Call the meeting back to order? It is 8:55.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so back to order. Moving on to old business. We have Pauline Gutlow regarding the town office proposal.
How shall I do this?
Introduce yourself.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to distribute these to you.
Okay.
You can take them and pass them around.
So while that's going on, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Pauline Gutlow and I'm here concerning my dismay over the comments made by town administrator Michael Walker regarding the request for proposals, RFPs, for Pownell's Town Hall project. Specifically, I'm here to defend my team, Messina Builders and myself, Pauline Gutlow, designer, project manager, representing the Pownell Historic Society. I wish to refute the unfounded and inappropriate statements made by our town administrator at the February 28th Select Board meeting and the March 3rd article. The banner story correctly stated five firms submitted proposals for new town hall, but only one met the 750,000 cost ceiling, Team Messina Builders and Gutlow. However, as the article continued, our proposal was singled out. Mr. Walker said, and I quote, "Some things were lacking from the company's response that caused him to not recommend considering them." Let's just say, if the proposal didn't meet the criteria, there was no relevant experience. The application left some items out, such as permitting and site evaluation. It's very unfortunate. They just didn't have a complete package, a complete picture of costs. The Messina Gutlow team disputes each of town administrator's six inaccurate statements. First, they didn't have a complete picture of costs. In fact, the team's proposal included specific costs submitted in a sealed envelope to construct foundation, build modular core offices, move schoolhouse, labor to complete project, subcontractor estimates, building materials, parking lot, and contingencies. None of the other proposals itemized costs, let alone met the 750 threshold. Second, there was no relevant experience. The team's experience was included beginning on page 11. As designed, the proposed town hall is 3,640 square feet, the approximate size of a medium large house. Messina Builders frequently build and or do additions for homes that size and larger. I too have designed and built large homes, remodeled multi-unit apartment buildings, and was chair to move and restore the Hancock Town Hall. Included are photos of innovative projects our team collaborated on, many in Williamstown. Each of our principals holds a Mass General contractor's license. Mass requires multiple onsite building inspections. Vermont does not require builders to be licensed. Further, as compared to a medium sized custom home, constructing a town hall is very straightforward. Third, the application left some items out, such as permitting. In fact, permitting was addressed on page 17. Before a modular project is built in Vermont, the design must be inspected and stamped by a state-approved third-party engineering company. Until there is an approved proposal, other required permits are needless. Fourth, the application left some items out, such as site evaluation. Site evaluation, also called a site plan, was addressed on page seven. Our site plan included Google View, plot plan, and identified 10 pertinent pieces of information. Fifth, did not provide conceptual drawings. Because finished plans were submitted with our team's proposal, conceptual drawings were unnecessary and pointless. And sixth, they just didn't have a complete package. Given I've refuted each of the town administrator's contentions, I ask Mr. Walker withdraw his statement that our team did not submit a complete package. And I ask the select board to evaluate the Messina Gutlow team proposal when reviewing other proposals. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
I'm just looking through the rest of this. I'm sorry. Just give me a minute.
I included the Bennington article so that you would prepare for that thing.
All right. Anybody have anything to say on this? Harry?
I believe Bob actually already stated he wanted all five looked at right from the beginning. And so it will be included in the process.
Yep.
And other than that, because none of us have looked at any of the information, we can't really comment any further than that.
Correct. And I was going to state the exact same thing. When we were reviewing the bid evaluation form, Mr. Jarvis did say there were five, only four are listed and we all agreed that all five would be evaluated.
So.
Okay.
And just to be clear, I think there was more in that statement than just the, whether or not it got included. I definitely want to see everything included for the board's evaluation and certainly we'll take, we'll take the recommendations of the TA when we're evaluating them. But we should always have all of the information to evaluate. That should, that should never be different. And that's for RFQs, RFPs, et cetera.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so new business. I don't think we have any other new business.
Um, well, I actually have some items that I want to, we don't need to discuss them tonight because it's taking long enough. But I do want to get some items put on, under new business for future meetings and we can just chip away at them. One of them is regarding human resource policies. I'd like to review what we have and discuss what we should, what we should have. I'd like to discuss public comment portion of the meeting and whether or not there should be a time limit. And I'd also like to define what is and what is not considered public comment, as well as maybe a review of what the formal complaint process is for community members and how to go about that so that public comment does not become a place where people just come to complain.
Is it town business or not?
Correct. I'd like to have a discussion regarding reading of mail at town meeting. And I'd like to discuss our meeting format and the possibility of looking at changing our meeting location so that it's a little bit more conducive to the community. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add for future new business?
Sure. I think there's some good ideas in there. One of the things I do know that we have is an agreement with the school, right? To use that facility. And if we could use, use that facility more often, it would be more conducive. I know when people come in and they want to make comments, they're stuck sitting in a hallway like Mr. Durer.
Or standing in front of the camera.
They're almost in the hallway.
Yeah.
We get the back of Mike's head quite often.
Yeah, I know.
So I think there was, there's a lot of good things to talk about there, but I'm not sure if we're biting that off tonight or...
No, I said for future. I just want it under new business. We can chip away at it going forward.
Warn it for the next, next meeting.
And then maybe to make it more manageable, take each one of those bullet items and maybe put one on each meeting.
Yep.
Would a lot of this then fall under the reorganization of the board, the select board standing rules of order that we've tabled?
Possibly.
Okay, because we tabled it to finish that discussion at our next meeting.
Yep. So, yeah, I could, yep, could make some proposals and whatnot then.
I'll send you the personal policy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next time we do another regular meeting, just email me when we get ready to set the agenda that I'd like to have this item placed on for this meeting.
Correct.
And that way there, we can chip away at them.
Okay, thanks, Linda.
All right, any other discussion for new business? All right.
Coming up.
Opening up to public comment?
Yes.
No? Nobody? I really thought we'd have more comments. Oh, Mr. Durer, yes, me.
I'm waiting for public comment.
I'm sorry. I thought you were swatting at a fly over there.
Public comment, because public comment go first from now on.
And let me, and let me do it before public comment rules get changed. That doesn't mean I'm going to talk for 20 minutes, but, so Meals on Wheels is going to be adding a Satellite Cafe to Pownell. On April 4th, we'll have lunch every Thursday, starting at 11:30, 11:30 to 12:30 at the Faith Christian Fellowship. It's the church right across from the library. I will actually be serving the food. The food will be delivered from the Bennington Cafe, which has been open for 10 years. They're having their 10-year anniversary this year. And we have a few other Satellite Cafes in the Bennington area, but this is the first, no, it used to be in Pownell. We're bringing it back to Pownell. So a hot meal will be served. It starts with soup and salad. It then is a main course and a vegetable and a dessert. For seniors over the age of 60, it's a $4 suggested donation. So no one's actually going to be taking money at the door, so there's no pressure. You pay what you can. If you're under 60, it's a $5 charge for the meal. And we ask that you call on Wednesday morning, by Wednesday morning, to let them know so they know how many meals to send. And the number is 802-442-8012, extension two.
Could you repeat that again?
802-442-8012, extension two.
How about the date again?
April 4th, Thursday, April 4th will begin and it'll be every Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
I want to make sure it's clear. Everybody's invited to come there. It's not for people who are normally getting Meals on Wheels.
No, no, it's for the public. It's not for the home, the homebound people will still receive their meals as, as is. This is for anybody who would like to come and have a lunch.
You just have to make a reservation ahead of time. You can't just show up because they won't have enough food.
Right, exactly.
Where was that again?
Faith Community Fellowship. That's Jason Domine's church. It's right across from the library.
It's at Main Street?
Main Street, yeah.
I have something that I'd like to do under public comment, but I'm not sure if I'm allowed to in my current position.
Recognize yourself.
Yeah, so, I recuse myself in this as a board member, so I'd like to make a public comment?
Yes.
All right. Brian Harris, regarding Pownell Youth Baseball, I'm involved in Pownell Youth Baseball. We're still looking for kids to sign up, so if you have a child anywhere from four all the way up through early teens and you want to get, get them interested in baseball, look us up on Facebook under Pownell Youth Baseball. All the contact information is there. It's a $50 donation. And it'd be great to field a lot of, you know, get enough kids involved. We need more community involvement, so please, sign your children up.
Is 53 too old?
For a coach? No. And I'd also like to point out that we're trying to field a girls softball team this year, so...
Is 53 too old?
We need coaches. I've been over this with you. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
With the issue with Facebook right now, should you give a phone number or something in case people can't get to Facebook?
I would have, but I kind of left that information at home. I apologize.
The apocalypse is stupid.
I had a lot of other things on my mind before coming here and Pownell Youth Baseball was not on that list.
So call Brian Harris at 1-802...
Feel free to give me a call, 802-430-1464. My phone number's public knowledge on Facebook anyway, so. Anyway, that's all I got. All right, so, anybody else for a public comment? All right, so then I move that we adjourn to executive session. I'm sorry, I shouldn't make a motion.
I motion that we move to executive session. Bob?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.